Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I will call to order the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on this day, Tuesday, October 14th, at 8:30 a.m., and we begin our meeting with the pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any adjustments to the agenda? Ms. Sullivan?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. At this time, we do offer a public comment period if there's anyone who would like to come before the county board for five minutes and present any thoughts or comments. I see nobody in the audience, so we'll move on to the, unless anybody here has anything, okay? I'll move on to the consent agenda items, of which we have claims and minutes from our September 23rd meeting, Cook County Snowmobile Club raffle permit application and a donation. I'm going to pull that, and we're going to discuss that toward the end of the meeting because it's a little more involved than what we normally have, from Patty Liasson. Going on then to authorization to the list equipment of Minnesota Department of Administration's surplus site. We have the approval to hire Daniel McFarlane as Family Services Case Manager, and we also are to approve the retirement of David Echol. Anything anyone else wants to pull? Commissioner Gamble?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I would like to pull item G, Retirement of David Echol.
And we'll put that along with the number D.
Thank you.
Okay.
With that, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. And we'll move on to our first presentation, which I will turn over to Administrator Treble.
All right, thank you. So we have Administrator Lindstrom here to present on the, what was that?
Lindholm.
Superintendent.
Superintendent. I apologize for that. I'll let you introduce yourself.
You could use your titles.
Yeah, right. No worries. It's good to be here, thank you. Chris Lindholm, Superintendent of IST 166. It's lovely to share in a county commissioners' meeting when I know all of you, so it's good to be here. Thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to take about five, 10 minutes just to share what the school district is up to right now, and I am here strictly as an information provider. I am not here by law advocating for or against the school district bond referendum. I'm here as a pipeline to the facts and what it is voters are being asked to do. So with that, I will start our slide deck if I got the technology working right. Thank you so much. So in Cook County School District, we are on November 4th, or as soon as ballots actually hit mailboxes, which might be as soon as today or yesterday for some of us. Voters are being asked to consider a $6.65 million bond referendum, and bond referendum dollars, to be clear, cannot be used for general operating expenses of a school district. They are for brick and mortar. They are for building and construction purposes only. We are, I would argue, Cook County Schools has done a fabulous job of keeping up its facilities over the time. I have a really cool map in my office of the 1952 build and the 1962 build and the 70 edition and the 98 edition, and now here we are in 2025, '26, looking to add some more footprint, which will indeed happen thanks to the successful passing of the referendum last November for just over 24 million. So when we did that election last November, the first question, the $24 million question, did pass. The second and the third question did not, and the board really struggled with the fact that in question two, there was a significant investment in the arts and an investment in activities for students, and that did not pass by just a slim margin, by 2%. And it's the philosophy of our board, as this slide says, that activities are an absolutely essential component of a kid's education. I was actually a high school AAA award winner. If you don't know what that is, every school gets a chance to nominate a male and a female in a senior class for a AAA award, and that's a student who does well in academics and the arts and athletics. And someone named Kristen Lindholm was a year older than I am. She actually won that award a year before I did, from the same high school, so we're quite proud of that. When we were working towards the referendum in 2024, the board engaged in over 10 listening sessions, surveys, lots of community involvement in that, student listening groups, staff listening groups, to try to figure out what the priorities are for the bond referendum. And when questions two and three failed, the board went ahead and said, let's reengage the community, and again, went through a couple of different community surveys and said, Chris, please see if we can find some other funding sources. And so we went to the IRRB, and I'm proud to tell you that the IRRB has approved officially a $5 million matching grant to reduce the cost of this project on our local homeowners and business owners. And the third bullet point here is a celebration. We were able to land a $250,000 LCCMR grant, which ultimately is through the legislature, but it's basically the funding that comes through from the Minnesota Lottery. So that will be targeted towards outdoor learning spaces and improvements to the school forest. The things that we're trying to address in this bond referendum include, you can see a picture here of the auditorium, an update to the ACA, the Arrowhead Center for the Arts. That was built in 1998, and if you do the math, that means it's almost 30 years old. It needs just updates. And one of the requests from the Playhouse and Sue Hennessy and the folks that use the auditorium is, you can see in these pictures, this summer, if you went to the ACA, they did a theater in the round layout, and that kind of creativity is the things that, are the things that the Playhouse enjoys doing and serving not just our kids, but our greater community. However, doing that right now is a Herculean effort because of the way those chairs are designed and the way those risers are designed. It takes a team of about three, four days to actually get that all taken out and rearranged. Today's technology and chairs that are easier to move is the ask of the Playhouse community to make it more flexible. But just because of age, updating some lighting, getting some new rigging in there that's not 30 years old, putting in a catwalk to make it safer, and a simple carpet update are some of the things that would be put into that. If you don't know, that theater sees well over 5,000 people a year. It programs for kids five years old all the way up to senior citizens. It is used nonstop by numerous organizations. Other challenges to be addressed, I think most prominent is that we have an incredibly successful track program of 70 to 80 students, and they have no track. And they actually have to take a day off school, drive all the way to Two Harbors or Duluth, practice running hurdles, practice jumping into pits, practice some of those things. Otherwise, the first time they get an experience with that is at their first meet. So the goal here is to help those students have a home place to practice, host meets, and feel like they're a part of the community that, you know, I would argue they are. The athletic field, that football field you see there, does just fine. The target here is not to make a new field for our football program. Our football program would argue their field is just fine. What we're missing, though, is a softball field on home turf, and we're missing the ability to use that field about 90% of the time. A natural turf field has to sit unused in order to be game day ready, come a varsity football game. So our community ed, Phi ed, other kids really don't get to use that field 95% of the time. So by putting in artificial turf, you can use that field 24/7. And so this would actually be a new field for Cook County Schools, if you think about it, because it would be able to be used all day, every day. If you were at a football game last Thursday, you know that the lights are a problem. We started them three times to get them to work, so part of this would be obviously some new lights and lighting for our football, our baseball field. And probably most prominent here is the field would go from a one-dimensional field to a three-dimensional field. It would serve softball, football, and track and field, along with be striped for soccer and some of the other things that our community likes to engage in. I think I might have skipped a slide there. No, I didn't. This is a nice pie chart to show the taxpayer impact of the $6.65 million bond referendum. Most notable talking point here is our homeowners would be paying about 28% of that cost. And the IRRB has graciously stepped in to cover almost half of that cost, along with some cost to commercial and ag properties. If the referendum passes, there will be a significant investment into the ACA, as talked about, supporting outdoor learning spaces, both in the front of the building and in the current school garden, and then also out in the school forest. And if it passes, an investment in a full track and field facility, a multi-purpose field for numerous sports, updates to the baseball field. And inside this plan is a plan for a concession stand that would include plumbing for bathrooms. And if you've been to a football game or an event at our stadium, you know that getting a wheelchair from the entrance to the stands really is not possible by yourself. It's all bumpy and it's rutted and it's not ADA compliant. So part of this would be making sure that we are ADA compliant and our bleachers are accessible for the entire community. This is just a visual that shows you the baseball field and then where the stadium would go. Notable on this particular picture is, a year ago when we were talking about question two, we did have, where the west end of the track is right there, an additional parking lot in the plan. That plan has been taken off the table, so there is no additional parking lot in this plan. There is no bus maintenance garage in this plan and no road going to that maintenance. That was all done as an effort to reduce the cost overall, to reduce the cost to taxpayers. If the referendum does not pass, we will not receive the $5 million from IRRB. That's very much a talking point in this, and then the improvements that are being proposed would simply be passed down the road for another day when things are more expensive. The overall tax impact for commissioners to know is basically $1 a month for every $100,000 of value for a homeowner. So if it's a $400,000 house, that's about $4 dollars a month, sorry, $4 dollars a month. If it's a $500,000 house, it'd be about $5 a month, essentially a cup of coffee a month. Actually, not even a cup of coffee. All right. So ballots should be hitting mailboxes like yesterday, today, this week. I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Powers and his team. They do an incredibly great job managing elections, and they are managing this election. It's the only election in Cook County this year. Thank you to you, Brady, and to your team. It's truly a blessing to have a county that is willing to do that and take it on. With that, I'm going to stop and then ask if there are any questions. Again, I'm not here advocating for or against, simply making sure people know the facts. I do have a meeting next week in the Lutson Township Board, and I've had several since prior to this. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much, Chris. Information is always good, and especially since people can tune in and hear you also at our board meeting. And appreciate you coming to Lutson. I'll see you next week.
Perfect.
And I don't know if we can hit Tofti and Schroeder before the election, but we'll see if we can or not. Okay, so I'll open it up for questions or comments. Does anybody have? Commissioner White?
How does Sue Hennessy change the lights these days? You're talking about catwalk. What does she do now?
Yeah. I appreciate that question. First, they have to move seating and risers out to clear the path for a lift to be brought in, and then she goes up in the lift and changes them, and then has to move the other chairs to move the lift to go back up and move it again. It is incredibly labor-intensive for her to do that, so thus the proposal for the catwalk. Thank you for that question.
I have another question. Last season, I saw the baseball, no, football field. I believe I heard that the team couldn't use it actually until the first game because it was such a wet season, and they could not use the football field because they did not want it to be a muddy mess for the first game, right?
Yeah, that is true. We have the multi-purpose field up above to the west of the main field, and that's where they generally practice so that they don't tear up the main field. This year, if you remember, I think it was their first home game that it rained nonstop, and they ultimately canceled it because of the lightning, which was a blessing because had they played that game, they would have trashed their field for the next three, four games. So that occurs. You're absolutely right, Commissioner White. Thus, artificial turf is really a trend. If you look across northern Minnesota, many districts that we play against have artificial turf, and it's for these same reasons, the rain, the snow, the ice. We figure we would gain about a month onto our girls' softball season by being able to play on it much earlier. Thank you for that.
I have another question. The turf these days, is it like the old-fashioned turf that would cause injuries not to heal, or is it, can you explain what the new turf is like?
Not in any detail, no. However, the technology has absolutely evolved, and if you watch a professional game and you see the games played now, when they hit the ground on a tackle, you see these little things fly up in the air. It looks like dust. That's part of the new technology, and that material needs to be added every single year to make sure that the turf field stays safe and playable. And when I talk to my colleagues, superintendents who have installed artificial turf, they've seen no change in injuries. And I think if you asked our football coaches, they would tell you that's for a lot of reasons. One is, yes, the technology has come a long way. But they'll also tell you that natural turf isn't forgiving either. Holes, ruts, bare spots, all that exists on natural turf, and so artificial turf is far more predictable and flat and even. So it's a both and, and in the districts I've spoken with, there's been no change in injuries, injury rates.
Okay, one last question. Obviously, I like football, but it's the football season, okay, so can't help it. So now all of that, I forget what I was going to say. Oh, how many, how many students are participating in football that come from Grand Portage or homeschool kids or for GES? Do you have?
I don't have any data on that. I do know that about 65% of our students are in activities of some sort, 65 to 70%. And we definitely have strong, strong engagement with our Grand Portage community. And Commissioner, I'll also remind folks that Vikings are undefeated this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, when I asked about the Grand Portage, do you, there's football for younger age kids, and there seems to be an awful lot of parents and community people from Grand Portage coming down because of the number of kids from Grand Portage, third and fourth graders and seventh and eighth graders, or maybe it's fourth and fifth, that are engaged in football. So the numbers of people, it's astounding, that come to football games to see learners learn how to play football. So it's a, I think it's a countywide community, positive community-growing space, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, Commissioner White. And what I can tell you is, over the last three years, we've seen about an 80% increase year over year in the engagement in community education. And I blame a lot of that on the pandemic, right? There was nothing going on in 2021, 2022. But we've staffed into that, and it has absolutely exploded. Football is just one of the things, but baseball, softball, little kids playing soccer, you've seen them out there, it's exploded, and I think that that's nothing but positive. But it speaks to the need for providing spaces for those wonderful activities. Thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
So is that, thank you for being here and providing these details. So that 80% growth, is that bringing to that 65% activity level? Is that what that translates into? It's grown to 65% activity level?
Yeah, that's a fun algorithm to try to study, right? Like, if community ed and youth things are exploding, then what's going to happen four or five years later as those kids age into middle school and then high school? That's what we would love to see.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
Right?
Yeah. That's what I was wondering is, so 65%, I have no perspective if that's how we compare to other districts or whatever, but I was just wondering if, and it's my assumption, if this passes, hopefully that number would increase or allow it to increase or, you know, invest in that direction at least.
And that was the belief statement at the beginning of our PowerPoint, is that our board believes that activities are essential to a good education and the student's well-being. And we know that kids that are in activities do better academically. So we want to make sure that we provide the opportunities for students to engage in activities and move that number from, you know, well over half our high school kids in sports to why not 65, 70, 75, 80%.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you so much for coming, and we have a nice handout here too, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we'll move on to highway discussion. Robbie is here with three different items he'd like to present to us.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right. It's a tough presentation to follow. Excellent handout. So I think the first thing we have on the agenda here is something we've talked about the last few years, and something that really helps us do the amount of work that we do every summer is construction inspection contracts. And so what I attached was the estimate for each of the projects that we have going out next year. I think the important thing to remember, if you are able to see the summary, is most of this is reimbursable. And so a lot of these projects are funded through state funds or federal funds. Some of them are local as well, local funds, so our local tax dollars. But the vast majority of this is 100% reimbursable from the state. So the local contribution, that's probably the thing most people are curious about, is really just any of the costs associated with our Chicago Bay Road project. And so I think if you zoom in enough on there, oh, where are you? You know, right around $65,000, more or less. So the last few years when we've done these contracts, we don't, you know, we typically come in somewhere 90, 95% of what these kind of initial costs are. But again, it's the main reason we're able to do, you know, deliver five projects or four projects a year instead of, as we've talked about in the past, historically, we've been one or none in some cases. And so I'm a big supporter of this, and I know you all have been as well in the past, so does anybody have any questions about this?
Okay, questions or comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So Robbie, looking at all of the listings there that you have, the various areas, and most of it's reimbursable, and the one I believe is the bridge is reimbursable first-come-first-served basis, so what have you learned as far as how to achieve that then when it's first-come-first-served?
Something like that, and I actually have a great update on that project. But yeah, first-come-first-served is one of the things we've talked about a lot, about basically being able to hire consultants, getting plans on the shelf, and being able to be first in line. And so your support for us being able to hire consultants is a big reason we're able to achieve that. So as of yesterday, actually, I just got the funding letter for that project. That means I have the signed plans now, and we could go out for bid, you know, tomorrow. Well, I can't tomorrow, you know, you've got to wait a few weeks and post it a few places, but, so we're in line with that, so that's secured. But we're not able to do that if we're not able to, you know, hire a consultant and plan ahead of time for this type of stuff. So that is actually secured right now, so.
And Madam Chair, as a follow-up to that, when we look at objectives and then we look at how we get there and then how we manage costs relative to that, so how that plays out in this scenario that you're talking about is that if we hire a consultant, and then that consultant enables us to be able to get in line so that we get the money, so that we get the funding, so it becomes reimbursable as opposed to putting it as part of the levy. The question is, is that what does it cost us to be first in line? And of course, it's predicated on the amount that that project is that we're looking, and I think was $85,000, something like that. So to answer that question, in our experience in the highway engineer is that if we have a highway engineer that comes in that is able to secure dollars, to reduce the tax burden because of how they operate and how they work and what they know, then we see the benefit of that. And in this case, if we're hiring a consultant relative to the cost of consultant for what we get because we're first in line, could you speak to that?
Absolutely. I think another thing to bring up too with the consultant, I think sometimes that word, it can be a dirty word. Why aren't I doing the work? Why isn't my staff doing the work? For some background, we do take on a number of in-house projects. We have limited capacity to do that. In this case, you know, this is a bridge, and so we do not have the capacity to do that. There are whole teams of people it takes to put together, you know, bridge plans, and just the math alone, that used to be just my job, was that, but now I get to come to meetings instead, which I like more, it's fine. But, you know, there's whole teams of people that put together bridge plans and something even as simple as this, and so a structure like that, we just, we can't do in-house. We can't. St. Louis County has their own bridge department. That's a whole other different animal. And so this is kind of a situation where regardless with this project, we have to hire somebody at the end of the day. We have to, we don't have a choice. As far as kind of that return, you know, we were able to, if you remember a few years ago, the whole UT road system, that type of thing, those UT signs you see everywhere, by going that route, that's why we're able to fund this particular project with non-levy dollars. And so, you know, that return there, you know, for this project, you figure, I think we're in the 1.2 range as far as a preliminary estimate on that structure. That's $1.2 million that is not coming from our local tax base directly, that would have had to otherwise. And so, you know, acknowledging, yes, we are spending money, I know that, but also that return of we're getting over $1 million of funding from elsewhere, and also, you know, kind of relating back to the construction inspection that we're talking about, all that's coming back as well. And so a lot of these, yes, there is, there is a local component. We do have to spend money sometimes, the nature of the job. But most of this, like I said, with just being able to tweak how we do things a little bit, those signs that go up, you know, enables us to bring in millions, which I'll stare at a UT sign every day for that dollar. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think from the public standpoint, if we look at how much we invest in our infrastructure that comes through your department, if we see, two things I see. One is being more aggressive in that area because we've made it a priority, so we're looking for outside dollars to try to address infrastructure challenges. And the other thing is how much we're spending for what we're getting. And so an investment upfront that has a return that is favorable, reduces tax burden overall and increases better infrastructure is a good scenario, and I think it builds trust within the community when we see that that's how we're operating, so.
Okay, yeah, and that's, I think I kind of maybe didn't elaborate on that part so much. Yeah, we could, and I touched on this at the beginning, we could not do this program, but then what we would have to do is go back to what we were doing of only one project a year, maybe two. You know, I just had one of my technicians retire, so now I am down to two, two and a half if you include me. But I shouldn't be in the field. And so it really limits what we're able to do if that's what, and we saw that historically. I think the graphic I had up from a committee of the whole, a while ago, showed, you know, it was one project since the early 2000s, that's what we were doing. And so now, kind of that return of, yes, we're spending money, most of it's reimbursable, but now we're talking about four or five projects, and we're really improving our infrastructure. infrastructure, is something like, to me, I find very worthwhile, is that.
Yeah. I think another component which would be, it'd be good to have, I don't know how achievable it is, and that is if you did comparable counties, and of course, when you're talking about comparable counters, you'd want to do it in the basis of just how much road infrastructure we have. And so the reason would be to use the comparable county to show what percentage of revenue is generated through resourcefulness to address that road infrastructure when you're looking at comparable counties.
Right.
And that's just saying, well, my goodness, when you look at Cook County, what we have, the number of roads we have, whatever, but the amount of money that's being generated through resourcefulness comparatively, that would be a good indicator to reinforce what you're saying and what you're doing.
Sure.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Commissioner White?
I would like this on the record. When Chicago Bay gets some work done on it, we have the Old North Road.
Yes.
That is a minefield of potholes.
Yes.
Lumps and whatever. And so would you explain, please, how we're going to slide over, you are going to slide over and do something to improve that road? I have a constituent who wants to know.
That's fair, and that's something you and I have talked about a lot.
Yes, but we need to have this public and on record.
Oh, sure.
One more time.
I mean, all our emails are public, everything we have is public, but that's okay, yes. So a lot of times what we do to try and save mobilization costs, that's a big thing, that I'm sure most of us are aware of. If you're not, it's the cost of moving equipment and staff up here. And so something we contend with quite a bit is, when do we authorize a small project? When do I wait and try and pair it with bigger projects? So, you know, things that we contend with, and I think sometimes too, people kind of forget how much things cost up here, much less post-COVID, how much things cost. And that is something in the construction industry that has not leveled out. It keeps going up and up and up. When we did a patch up at the Gunflint Pines right there last summer, two summers ago, we did all the work. The only thing we didn't do was pave it, and that was still looking at, I think it was like 25 or $30,000. That's like 100 feet, maybe. And so, you know, when we, you know, we couldn't, the similar portion on County Road 60, where we had some pavement there adjacent to the Gunflint before the bridge, we had that reclaimed, and then we graded it out. You know, that was north, I think that was right around 40 or $50,000. No paving, though. And so it's a tough thing to try and say, you know, yes, I'm just going to mobilize the whole thing to go repave or fix. How long is that stretch? Quarter of a mile, if?
Yeah.
Right. And so, not to underscore it, but we're trying to time it. And so can I save in that mobilization cost? That's the big one. So I say all of that to say, yes, next summer we will fix that part of the North Road there. You know, it's not officially going to be in anything like this. What actually we're working on right now is trying to figure out whether or not we want to go collect some survey points. It's a long enough stretch of road, too. You don't want to just kind of willy-nilly it. If you remember that part of 61, I'll throw Mindot under the bus a little bit right now, just south of the tunnels there, I think Betty's Pies. When that was getting redone, remember how that did that for a while? Yeah, we don't want that. So, so what we're trying to assess is, you know, do we put together one or two pages of plan sheets and also put that out for bid, you know, as part of a big project? So maybe it goes out for bid with Chicago Bay Road, and it goes out for bid with the Arrowhead? Or is it something where once we award those two projects, because we'll do those together, do we just add this on? We're trying to figure that out right now. But regardless, it'll get done. North Road will get fixed in 2026.
And if not, you'll be back to explain why.
Probably. There'll be, I would hope there's a very good reason. But yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll hear a motion to approve the use of WSB for 2026 construction inspection services.
Still moved?
Support?
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful, thank you. The next thing we'll talk about is our County Road Safety Plan. And so what is that? We probably haven't talked a lot about that. It's a document that we have up here that we work with Mindot on to kind of assess basically what it says, the safety of our county road system. So what does that entail? It looks at the striping needs on our road. It looks at, you know, potentially, I'll put it in quotes, dangerous curves, so sharp curves. It looks at unlit intersections, that type of stuff. What this document allows us to do then is, it's kind of a template to say, we can use this to now apply for additional funding. And so if you've heard of H-SIP funds, Highway Safety Improvement Funds, it's a source of federal money that exists out there to do things like we just mentioned. Rumble strips is another scenario, roundabouts, all that type of stuff. I'm not saying we are doing any of that. I'm saying it helps us make a case for it, or not make a case, basically. And so this year is our year to update the County Road Safety Plan, so it's led by Mindot, so there is a cost participation part of that. Because it's federal funding, the 20%, they cover the 80, or the 80% is, I'm sorry, covered with federal funds, we have to cover the 20%. So for us, it ends up being just over $28,000 to put this plan together. So does anybody have any questions about this?
Questions or comments?
I've learned to like roundabouts. It took a little while, but.
They're nice. I like them. I don't know if they belong up here yet.
Yeah, I was just thinking about our stoplight, and I mean, I know that's not your call.
It's like half our call, actually.
Okay, okay. It's like a half about.
Yeah, yeah.
Some people like them too much, though. There's a roundabout followed by a roundabout, and by the time you get out of there, you
You're going the wrong way, yeah. Also, unlit intersections, if I'm unfamiliar with a place, I can really see where a light at the intersection would be really helpful. When I drive at night, I almost find those lights distracting versus like, oh, there's a car at that intersection because you see the headlights. But is it, that is the safe way to go, is the lit intersection?
Well, I think what's, I think what's different, and I've experienced this now living up here, is we don't have any ambient lighting. It is bright when you see a new, like when we have our signs up, and we purpose, and we've talked about this a little bit, we purposely, I won't say downgrade our signs, but we try and do the least, I'll put it in quotes, the least bright one we can. I believe the brightest standard you can get is like, I think it's DG through diamond grade reflective, something or another. And if you see one of those at night, I mean, it is blinding, but I think a big reason when I've talked to folks too, is we don't have any ambient lighting up here. I'm not looking to light up every single intersection. I frankly don't want to. But yeah, I mean, generally, you are correct, yeah. A lit intersection is going to be more safe, just from being able to see cars, see people, animals, whatever it might be. But, you know, again, similar conversation to the roundabouts and to rumble strips and all of that. If it makes sense, sure, but we're not just going to do it for the sake of doing it.
Thank you.
I think Duluth can be our training ground for roundabouts.
It's helped, it's helped me.
Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Sullivan?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to sign the agreement and resolution supporting County Road Safety Plan cost participation.
I support.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful, thank you. So the last thing we'll talk about is our winter sand contract. And so just for clarification on this, this is just the sand, this doesn't include the salt, and I believe we do the mixing of it. And so once we get salt for out of, out of a Mindot contract, once we get that, then we kind of do all the mixing ourselves. If you remember, we built that salt sand shed a couple of years ago, and that's where everything is housed. Generally speaking, our budget line for this is, I think over the last couple of years, is $100,000. It depends on the winter, though. Last winter, not, not really gnarly, therefore we don't need that much extra. If you go back a few years, you'll see, you know, maybe we spent 110 or 120, you know, because we had those bad winters in the early 2020s, if you remember that. This is also a line item where we hadn't increased yet the budget line for years and years. So for a long time, it was an $85,000 line item. What we're starting to see is, we kept going over it, obviously the price is going up and up and up every year, so that's where we increased it. But does anybody have any questions about, about sand?
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So we talked about it prior to our meeting, and looking, looking at what we're paying on this, we paid double what the norm is up here. And it is something that we let out for bid, so we get, we have one bidder, and it's consistently been Isaac Hansen. When you look at what you could expect to pay in the state of Minnesota, per yard, $15 to $30, we're paying 56, so we're paying about double. And if you qualify it, it's how much you're paying and then where you're located to get it to you. So that's, that's an issue. And we did talk about the fact that if we're going to scope out where we do have sand available as a resource up here in Cook County, that can maybe alleviate some of this. There are some other components that have to look, look at relative to washing that sand, but again, it comes back to the foundational things, which is, what are we trying to do? Well, we need sand for winter, and then the fiscal responsibility, how can we buy that as inexpensively as we can? And, and I did contact, although they didn't get back to me, a place in Carlton, as I had mentioned, just to see what it would be. And anything that we can do to try to reduce cost, if the process requires that we let it out for bids, and that's the way it goes, then we comply with process, and this is the end result we get. If there's something that we can do that doesn't compromise process but allows us to get more competitive, that I guess is what I, what I would encourage.
Sure. Yeah, no, we, we do have to go out for bid, just with the nature of how we're paying for this. And so that is something that, yeah, I mean, I think as long as I know, and as long as I've, as long as I've been here, and as long as I've heard, we've always only had one bidder with this. And so I appreciate that Isaac's does this, obviously. But it is, it's part of that bigger conversation. If you remember the DNR and the AIGRGET mapping program, they were up here, that presentation, you know, once those maps are done, I think it'll be really interesting to see what type of resources are potentially up here, to the point you brought up of, you know, the sand availability, you know, we need clean sand, it has to be washed. If there is clean sand up here, I mean, that's a, that's a huge cost savings. I know, I know there's other contractors that have talked about, you know, opening another wash plant up here, but, you know, that is several millions of dollars of an investment that, you know, a private company would have to do. And so I can understand the trepidation with it, I can understand, you know, maybe, yes, there is a demand, but is it enough of a demand to warrant that type of investment? You know? I think that's where, you know, again, the results of this program, you see kind of the partnership too, that the county is now doing through the transfer station. Is that something we can look into in the future, either with our gravel pits, with sand, with something, you know, I don't know, I'm just spitballing at this point. But it is a real concern that we have. We've looked in the past as well, trying to truck it in elsewhere, and the cost just doesn't make sense. The product itself might be cheap, but again, you know, if I just picked on Carlton, all the way down, all the way back, you know, and you're talking 1,500 yards, 10 yards a truck, 15 trucks, you know, that's multiple, that's an endeavor. And so, yeah, so that, that's where, to the points you brought up, that's where we pay for it. One source, we're in the middle of nowhere, and so trucking it up here is kind of the thing. I think what we're going to try and do in the future is, right now, we just let it out for bid in the paper, you know, post it for a few weeks, that's what we've always done. But we're slowly pivoting everything over to our online system, and so maybe that would open it up in the future for people to see. It's what we do with our construction projects. It hasn't changed who has bid, but it makes it easier to bid, I guess, so, yeah, if anyone knows anyone with lots of washed sand.
Appreciate the conversation. Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to award the contract to the sole bidder Isaac Hansen and Sons for $84,300 for 1,500 yards of winter sand.
I'll support. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And I know there was a request. It's not on the thing, but for a couple of updates on some projects. Is that okay?
Sure.
Yes, okay. So there was one, we were trying to do a culvert up on County Road 92, so that's just past mid-trail, way up there. I think it got delayed a week. I'm not sure, we must have gotten caught up somewhere else, you know, trying to wrap things up before winter. But just as an update, is that that will be happening, part of the, you know, County Road 92 will be closed while we're doing that. So if you need more information, we have the press release. But otherwise, it should be, it looks like it's about one and a half miles in from, one and a half miles west of the eastern entrance to the 92s, and it'll happen between nine and noon on today, no, yesterday, Monday, Monday, the 13th. It already happened.
Nice.
That's good.
Perfect.
Perfect, done, great, thanks.
Thanks for the advance notice.
You're very welcome. Why it went out? But then another big one, the Gunflint Armill the Hill project, you know, everybody's probably noticed some big changes there. You can see that there's an actual deck to a bridge, that's very exciting. And so the next steps with that are putting on the railings or the barriers in the railings, and then pulling out the temp bridge, as far as that piece is concerned. Right now, we're working on finishing the shouldering and grading and paving. And so you're going to see a lot of traffic pattern changes, so please, 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 I said this before on the radio, and I'll say it again, just be mindful when you're driving through there. Day to day, it could be different depending on where they're paving, so, yeah, keep that in mind. And then cut-off road and that old ski hill road intersection, there's a lot of paving work going on. So just, when you're in the area, just please slow down, be mindful. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for the updates.
Appreciate it.
Next item, number six, we have Land Services presenting Katie Johnson interim use permit with Niva.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, board members. On October 1st, the Cook County Planning Commission met. The first item that we'll discuss is an interim use permit submitted by Katie Johnson. This was a renewal interim use permit. She runs a mobile tattoo business out of a trailer on her property. The interim use permit was initially issued in 2019 for five years, and so we were doing a renewal of that permit. We received no written comments during the written comment period, and no one was present at the public hearing to speak for the request. So the planning commission did make a recommendation unanimously to approve the interim use permit for an additional five years, and they did include a few attached conditions of approval that are, six conditions of approval that were included in your packet.
Okay. Questions or comments? Commissioner Sullivan?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for the five-year renewal for the interim use permit to allow a home business operation in the FAR III Zone District on property adjacent to County Road 7.
Support?
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is a rezon request. So this is submitted by Skylar and Clay Johnson. This parcel is about 44 acres just off of the Pine Mountain Road near Devil's Track Road. This was previously state of Minnesota land that went up for auction last year, so this is the first time it's transferred into private land ownership. It was originally zoned FAR I, which is consistent with a lot of our large tracts of public land in Cook County, and it is near the FAR III Zone District. Immediately next to it is other land that's FAR III. So the applicants are requesting to have this parcel rezoned FAR III, and this would allow it to have more subdivision potential, and also reflects more uses compatible with more residential zoning than the FAR I Zone District that it currently is. During the written comment period, we did receive one written correspondence that expressed some concerns about the road designation of Pine Mountain Road and wetland concerns and utility access considerations. So we did do some research on those concerns, and those were integrated into the staff narrative for the planning commission's consideration. And after, and at the public hearing, there was no one present to speak for or against the application. The planning commission felt that this rezon was compatible with the existing area with the residential uses that are just off of the Pine Mountain Road in this area and the Devil's Track Road corridor. And there is no FAR II zoning in this area, so the jump from FAR I to FAR III is fitting more so with that character. There's no FAR II, there's no middle ground, so to say, when considering what options were alternative. And so, this was a recommended unanimous approval by the Planning Commission. There are no conditions attached to rezones, it's just a flat, you either are rezoned or you're not. And they did recommend approval. The, you know, just to address some of those concerns identified in the staff narrative from the neighboring comment letters, we did get information from Arrowhead Cooperative about the utility access, so there is electric and internet that comes pretty much up to that property, there might be more investment to get it throughout that parcel. The road designation concerns, I did get ahold of the federal employees while they're still in the office there, and they said there were no unique road designations with the Pine Mountain Road, it's not like a scenic-specific road. Perhaps if we were over on the Gunflint side, where the Gunflint Trail is a scenic byway, that would have been more of a consideration. And then, the wetland consideration, that's a natural part of our subdivision review process. So, that would be something that we'd integrate into any natural subdivision process administratively or through a plating process. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the nature of the rezone.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Sullivan?
Just a comment, that the wetlands are primarily on the south side of Pine Mountain Road, and so, as you look at potential development for the future, most of that development, most of the land is on the north side. It also seems to fit very well, and this was part of the discussion at the Planning Commission, with the flavor of that area where the Pine Mountain Road intersects with Devil Track Road. There are other people living there, there's the trailer court, there are private residences, and so, it seems like a natural place for development.
Okay. Any comments or questions, then? Otherwise, I'll hear a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for the rezone of the forty-four point zero five acres from FAR I to FAR III on parcel ID fifty-three two thirty fourteen hundred.
Support?
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the last item is a conditional use permit request submitted by North Shore Waste in Cook County. So, this is at the TOFTI side of the North Shore Waste hub-and-spoke model of their waste plan. Currently, TOFTI has a transfer facility that the county has been maintaining over time, it's next to the highway garage just off of Sawbill Trail. However, it is at an age where there was no original conditional use permit, and so, we felt it was appropriate to run this through a conditional use permit hearing as we look at expansion and intensification of that facility, and provide the neighbors the opportunity to comment and express any concerns they might have with that. With that said, there were no written comments submitted, and there was no one at the public hearing to speak for or against the application. The Planning Commission felt that this plan by North Shore Waste is very reflective of the build-out that's done in Hovland, that's been very well-received by that area of the county, and they were appreciative of the details provided in the application by North Shore Waste. And again, it was a unanimous recommendation to approve the application. There were some conditions, five conditions, to reflect the conditional use permit is consistent with the application as proposed by North Shore Waste, just be protective if it ever changed hands to different ownership, to remain consistent with that.
Have you heard if there's a starting date from Dustin?
I have not.
I haven't either.
Okay. I appreciate the maps, because then I can take this to the township and provide a set to each of the supervisors, so.
Madam Chair, I can speak to the start date. I met with Rena, Rena Rogers, and Dustin out at the transfer station on Saturday. We did a little tour, we started in Grand Marais, and then I, on my own, went out to the TOFTI site, but got an update on both projects, and at this point, we're focusing on the Grand Marais transfer station, and so, we do not yet have a start date for the TOFTI.
Okay. Okay. But to be expected.
To be expected.
It will be coming. Any questions or comments on this? Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd make a motion to approve the resolution for the conditional use permit, for a permit by rural transfer station for municipal solid waste, recyclable materials, and demolition waste at one ninety-eight Sawbill Trail TOFTI. Support?
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for all of your updates.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Thank you, Niva.
Moving on to Brady and voting delegates from MCIT.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an annual event, Minnesota County's Intergovernmental Trust, that's our insurance company, it's a joint powers agreement. So, every year, they meet during the AMC conference since December eighth this year, and there are things to vote on this year, they have candidates for the board, and they need to get our, who is our voting member and our alternate, and they need that by the end of October. So, right now, they have listed as Ginny Storely as our delegate, and Ann Sullivan as our alternate, and we don't have to respond if that's the same. If you're going to change it, I need to put that down and send it to them, so.
I'll be there.
And I'll be there.
Okay. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So, if the two representatives that we have in place are going to be there and going to attend, then it makes sense that they would be our delegates to vote. So, I'd make a motion to that effect, if that's what you need.
Sure.
Otherwise, if we just leave it, and it...
I think a vote is good.
Okay, all right. Support?
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Okay. So, we'll be moving on to administrator updates.
Madam Chair, would you like us to take questions on the retirement of David Echol?
At this time?
Yes. Okay. So, I have asked Allison and Brooke to be here as well, in case there's any questions about the agenda item that was pulled from the consent agenda, which was approving the retirement of David Echol.
Commissioner Gamble, you did ask for that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I really didn't have any questions, I think we all knew that this was coming, I appreciate that you're available for that, I just felt that it was appropriate, given David's nearly half a century of service to our community, to express our gratitude for David's unwavering commitment and years of dependable service. His announced retirement in December should not be shelved in the personal archives or personnel archives without pausing to recognize that such longevity is a rare and remarkable testament to David's outstanding work ethic and personal character. He has consistently demonstrated a positive attitude, humor, and as long as I have been privileged to know David, is characterized by his heartwarming smile. David's legacy extends not just to his steadfast reliability and performance, but also to the people he has inspired. He has been a friend to so many of us, and we are all better for having had the opportunity to work alongside David. On behalf of a grateful community, we offer our most sincere and heartfelt appreciation for your unmatched dedication. Thank you, David, for forty-seven years of public-spirited service, you have earned this next chapter in life, and we wish you health, happiness, and God's richest blessings in the years ahead.
Thank you. And luckily, he will be here for a while yet, so we can express our gratitude to him as we go along. So, thank you for being here.
Make a motion to...
I'm sorry, David couldn't be here, David hasn't been out today.
He's starting early, yeah.
And we will be celebrating David, and we are in the planning process for a retirement party for him as well.
That's great.
Yes.
I make a motion to accept with regret his retirement announcement.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on, then, and bring up the donation request. It's a very unusual one, if you look over a resolution that we need to sign, we are required for a motion and a second, a's and nays recorded, and so forth. So, it's something that we've not, we're not familiar with. So, I've asked Attorney Peterson to fill us in and give us a little background on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have the factual background, but apparently, this was a donation that was made to the Cook County Search and Rescue Unit. This is a volunteer organization, however, the sheriff calls out to the unit and kind of directs, directs its action, or directs where it's headed. So, I think that's probably the reason why the donor provided the, these gift cards through the sheriff's office, and had the condition or the term that they be used for the volunteers, for meals for the volunteers. So, what is before the board currently is a resolution, which needs to be approved on a two-thirds basis to accept the donation, and upon the specific terms as requested by the donor.
Administrator Treble, did you have anything to add?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. So, I believe, have you, do you have copies, otherwise, I will go over. Do you have the copies?
I don't have copies, we have it electronically.
Okay, okay. So, you read it through, so you understand that when I call for the motion, the second, we have to record the a's and the nays, and then the witnesses would be Chair and Auditor. So, okay. All right, so, if there are any questions or comments, Commissioner Sullivan?
I'll just make a motion to approve or and accept the gift to search and rescue for meals for responders by resolution.
Okay, and...
Madam Chair, is there an amount that should be noted in that motion?
We can, we can indicate the fifty-dollar gift cards.
The two.
Two fifty-dollar gift cards, yeah. I support that motion.
Okay, so, I'll call for, for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Okay. It's kind of an unusual one, but thank you for all of your input. All right, then, moving on to, any further updates? Administrator Treble?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, I do have a couple additional updates. I wanted to mention, we issued a press release for this as well, but we had a Pigeon River Cross Border Exercise activity that was on October eighth. It was phenomenal, it was very interesting to participate in the meeting before, as well as hear about the activity. So, it was a joint effort between Cook County and Grand Portage Emergency Management, in conjunction with the Pigeon River International Emergency Management Committee and our Canadian partners. So, what happened is essentially, search and rescue operations were tested with a ground search, and they used Canadian drones through, and the Minnesota Air Rescue Team was also called in to assist, as well as the Minnesota State Patrol helicopter. So, they had someone basically be lost next to the Pigeon River, and then facilitated this activity where they had to be rescued by search and rescue and all of our partners. We had about fifty people that participated. What I've heard from the team is there were some really great lessons learned, and it was a great opportunity to partner with all of those stakeholders. We also learned that we need to engage in more discussions about permanent cross-border communication solutions with Grand Portage Tribal Coast Guard. So, it was, again, just a really, really interesting opportunity for our community. In addition to that, I also wanted to mention that our assessor, Bob Thompson, was elected president of the Minnesota Association of Assessing Officers, so we're very proud of him, and he will serve in that role for about a year.
Awesome.
So, then, the last thing I wanted to mention, go ahead.
Yeah, excuse me, Madam Chair, I just, to interject there, in meetings that I've had with Bob, with his peers, or whatever, he's very well-respected, so this is well-deserved, and it's, it's always admirable, or reassuring, when somebody is elected to a position by his peers when they're respected. So, he's, he's earned the opportunities, I just want to know that.
And thank you, thank you so much for adding that, yes. Like I said, we're very proud of him, he's very excited about this opportunity, so we can certainly share more as the year goes on.
So, we assume that all pill manners will be taken care of.
If he's listening, yes. So, then, the last thing I wanted to mention is, I just wanted to acknowledge the article that was in the North Shore Journal earlier this week, and just mention that we will be bringing more information to the PHHS Board Meeting next Tuesday, which those meetings are typically from eight-thirty, it will be from eight-thirty to ten-thirty. So, at that time, we'll have one of our consultants, Megan Mose, present on the assessment that she will be doing for our PHHS team, and will answer questions and be able to provide more information at that time. So, that has been our approach, is bringing information to the PHHS Board Meeting, and that's how I'm hoping to proceed as we move forward as well. So, just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
If I were to guess, we may not have time for our committee updates at that meeting, just because of that.
Yeah.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay, thank you, Administrator. We'll move on to Commissioner reports and meeting updates. Anybody have anything they would like to share?
Well, the Administrator just talked about the whole thing up in Grand Portage, which was a really impressive coordination of resources. And Jay was up there, and Rowan were up there, and they were talking radio channels, and how to compensate for something, and how to improve something. And then, the Border Patrol was there, and EMS, Ruth and Mike were both there, so it was a great opportunity on the ground for people to actually see how it, how it is coordinated and work together. Also, they brought in a helicopter, of course, and it was just like if you see it on TV. I mean, someone actually said, this is just like on TV, because they lowered someone down to pick up the rescued person, and then they lifted them up. Now, had we known, we would have brought binoculars, because it was in the distance, but it was pretty impressive.
I think I saw that that day, as I was downtown at noon, heading out over Grand, Lake Superior, and I thought, what's a helicopter doing going out over the middle of the lake?
It came from St. Paul, refueled, I think, in Duluth, maybe, and then made its way up to rescue a person. It was very comforting, very comforting to know.
Administrator Mills?
Administrator Treble mentioned the Canadian drones, and I just wanted to know if they were a little more polite, or if there were any pretty much similar.
You know, I honestly don't have a lot of information on the difference.
Is it something coming up?
Any other updates? Commissioner Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to mention that the Cook County Historical Society had their centennial celebration, I was reminding it for the public when we were together last time, but it was very well-attended, beautiful evening, and just appreciate all the effort that was put into celebrating the history of Cook County. CCLP met recently, and one of our discussions was about the pullback on a lot of the grants related to energy. But as the group met, we talked about what can we continue to do even without an executive director, because there are not a lot of funds available, or grants available, for getting those director positions in energy filled at this time. But we talked about continuing to work with energy audits, pilot projects, shared procurement of funds, weatherization and retrofitting, like we're doing with Public Health and Human Services and the HRA, affordable housing efficiency standards. So, the group is still going to be active, but in a little bit different way. We had an opportunity to have a FireWise meeting, and had no one there from the U.S. Forest Service, but did have some updates on prescribed burns that were done prior to the government shutdown, and the fact that they're continuing to work on the grade, that we are hoping that that will, project will be finished in the near future. We don't have a specific date, but continuing work there. We had our final meeting for the Roseau District, the residential open space overlay, was very well-attended here at the courthouse, and we have people that are interested, so hopefully Rena will be, or not Rena, excuse me, Niva, will be contacted in the near future about potential projects. Soil and Water Conservation District met, and one of the things they did is talk about the new open meeting law. And one thing I would hope is that our county attorney would have an opportunity at some time to talk about that, and how it will change potentially our meetings in the future. And then, we did have the bonding tour last week, and both on Wednesday and Thursday. Wednesday, the House came, and Thursday, the Senate was here, and it was really very busy, lots of activity, in a short period of time. busy, lots of activity in a short period of time. One hour on Wednesday and a half hour on Thursday. But we did have an opportunity to speak with our representatives, and specifically Representative Scraba and Senator Hostchild, thank them for all the support they've provided for our community, and I think the tour went really, really well. So I'm appreciative of the time that was spent and our opportunity to interact again with our representatives. Cook County Coalition of Lake Associations had a very different type of meeting this month. They had a panel of speakers talking about copper nickel sulfide mining in northeastern Minnesota, and so they had four different agencies, and it was just an opportunity for them to present, and then questions and answers afterwards, but really nice setup. And then lastly, I want to talk a little bit about a project that we've helped related to childcare. Cooperation Station had an open house this past Saturday, and it was an open house for the public, and they talked at length about their programming, about the redesign for the actual building inside, and new playground areas, there's a new sandbox sitting out there. So anyway, it was really nice to be able to attend that and take a look at all the facilities and the improvements that have been made and the opportunities that we have for childcare here in Cook County. And with that, that's what I...
You did it. You should go through.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a heads up that the EDA's TAC Harbor Subcommittee is posted on the website, and there'll be regular updates on that website as the committee meets and as STANTEC, you know, bounces ideas off and gives presentations. So please, if you have interest in that, you can go on the website, and there'll be regular updates. Also, I'm grateful for Commissioner Sullivan mentioning the open meeting law. I am going to be gone on November twenty-fifth, and so I would like to attend virtually, and so we need to post for that. So I'm hoping we can have that posting just as a standing posting, but I don't know what's involved in changing that, so, but just want to give a heads up.
Interesting. You see that, that are a fourteen-hour drive back following Thanksgiving, so that might be an option. I'm just talking.
Yeah, please. Yep, yep. And they've simplified it quite a lot, is my understanding. I'm a lawyer, but they've simplified it quite a lot, so it was very restrictive before, and now it's pretty loose, honestly, so.
Interesting. I have a question. Does anybody know what they're doing at TAC Night Harbor there with what's going on right now?
They're decommissioning it.
And that's what they're just bringing in different soil and...
I don't know the technically exactly what they're doing, but there are state and federal mandates when you shut down a power plant, especially a coal power plant, to kind of reclaim.
They just see a lot of work on the east end of that, where it looks like there.
Yeah, yeah. So, and part of this committee will be looking at, you know, what is specifically involved in that decommissioning process, and where does that leave the land, and what can be used, or what would need more work for something else to be put in there, and all that kind of stuff. So it's a long process, and of course, there's a little bit of anxiety because of the sale of elite energy to Blackrock, but I haven't heard peep about it from officials, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll have a couple little updates. We had our NACO meeting, we're still reorganizing, bringing new people in and looking at what we need to support and what they need to support at the Senate and Representatives when they have a chance to meet, and when they meet too. I believe the Senate is being called back together again, so we'll see on that. Then I'll just give you a little side story. A couple weeks ago, I attended a class reunion, and I hadn't seen a lot of my classmates for a long time, but I knew one fellow there, and we have an interesting statistic. Out of my class, myself and Bob Colain are the two commissioners from my class. He served twenty-four years in LeSour County as a commissioner. And so I sent a little note to Julie, and I said, "Is this common to have two classmates being commissioners?" And she's going to look into it.
Yeah, that's fun.
May be very common and may not be.
Right.
It was just kind of fun to refresh my memory with Bob and talk about some of his funny stories about campaigning at the farmer's barn and chicken coop and all of that out that way. So, anything else for reports? Then we'll look at the upcoming meetings to note. Our next board meeting will be October twenty-eighth, and then we do have a change for the FireWise Committee. Instead of October, it's going to be Wednesday, November nineteenth at ten a.m. It'll be a Zoom at the community center.
Oh, no, that's for, what one was, is that?
FireWise?
Um, it's invasive species, I think?
Cook County Invasive Team.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, invasive species, okay, okay.
It's invasive.
Not till November then.
Cook County Invasive Team, CCIT.
Okay. Don't worry about it then, folks, nothing this month. Coming this Friday, we have our district meeting down in Duluth. I hope that many of you can come, eight o'clock on Friday morning. And then also, I'll get together with the tribal folks at the courthouse on Thursday afternoon. So it's kind of a full Thursday. Friday morning, I'll already be in Duluth because of my meetings, so that will take place then for a little bit longer, stay in Duluth. Anything on that, being in Duluth?
Is anyone else going on that boat ride?
Not on the boat ride.
Oh, oh, okay. All right, okay.
Okay, and we have in our pack at the lodging tax comparison through July, and then we also have October staff anniversaries. Garrick Transar, Highway Department, one year, Kristen Pedersen, Public Health, one year, Kyle Munson, Assessor's Office, four years, and Bob Thompson, County Assessor, nine years. Before we end the meeting, I'd like to make a rec, I'd like to present a recognition. Yesterday was the Indigenous Peoples' Day. Ten years ago, that was brought before our board, and much discussion, both positive and not, and I would like to say that that's the first time we passed the fact that we would recognize the Indigenous Day, and so we have a recognition of that. I'd like to read. So yesterday, on October fourteenth, the community observed Indigenous Peoples' Day, a day established to honor the rich cultures, history, and contributions of the Indigenous people across our nation and continent. The day serves as a reminder of the resilience and strength of the Indigenous communities, including Grand Portage Band of Lake Superior Chippewa. The Grand Portage Band is rooted in rich heritage of the Anishinaabe people, embodies the spirit of the perseverance and connection to the land. For centuries, they have thrived in vibrant landscapes of northeastern Minnesota, cultivating deep relationships with the natural world. Their traditions, languages, and customs are woven into the very fabric of Cook County and the entire Arrowhead and beyond, enriching our cultural tapestry. Indigenous Peoples' Day is not only a celebration of these contributions, but also an opportunity to reflect on the historical injustices faced by Indigenous communities. It's a moment to acknowledge the impact of colonization, including the loss of land, culture, and language. By recognizing the day, we commit to understanding these histories and working towards reconciliation and justice. We honor the Grand Portage Band's achievements in cultural preservation, environmental stewardship, and community resilience. The band plays a vital role in safeguarding the natural resources of the region and advocating for sustainable practices that honor traditional knowledge and promote economical balance. As we observe the Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday, let us embrace the opportunity to learn from Indigenous voices and their perspectives. By engaging with the histories and the stories of Grand Portage Band and the other Indigenous people, we deepen our understanding of their experiences and the ongoing challenges that they face. Whether through art, music, storytelling, literature, or community gatherings, every effort to amplify Indigenous voices contributes to a broader understanding and respect for their heritage. Together, we can work toward a future that honors Indigenous people, promotes their rights, and fosters a deeper connection to the land that we share. By embracing that day, we can take a step toward healing and justice for Indigenous communities, ensuring that their stories and cultures continue to thrive for generations to come. And with that, we have no further business, so while we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.